All right, I'll make a motion that we seat Liz Furia as a voting member for the evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have a site plan review for property located at 180 Route 125. The project proposes one building with six contractor-style garage bays on the 2.77 acre site. We have everything, the application's complete.
The application is complete.
Can we vote for jurisdiction before we...
I'll make a motion to invoke jurisdiction.
Yes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, can you introduce yourself and give us an overview?
Yep, I'll give you a big overview, so, good evening, members of the board and members of the public. For the record, my name is Ryan Lovell with Lovell Associates. I am here this evening on behalf of the Mastriano Group to present the proposed development over at 180 Route 125 in Brentwood here. Our firm was responsible for preparing the existing conditions plan submitted as a part of the application package. We've also worked in close coordination with Engineering Alliance, which is the civil engineering firm responsible for the PE design and preparation of the site plans that you guys have. So, this project involves the construction of a new 11,050 square foot contractor bay building on a 2.77 acre parcel located along Route 125. So, the site currently includes two existing buildings totaling 3,520 square feet, a paved access driveway, and gravel parking areas. So, the rear portion of the site is largely undeveloped, consisting of grass and wooded areas. Under the proposal, the existing buildings and driveway access will remain unchanged, and the two current businesses, an automotive sales business and dog daycare, will continue to operate on the site. The new contractor bay building will be constructed to the rear of the existing structures, accessed by a 24-foot wide drive aisle extending from the existing pavement. And a 26-foot drive aisle will encircle the new building, facilitating safe and efficient vehicular circulation. This site will provide 31 new parking spaces, each conforming to Brentwood zoning by law standard of nine feet by 20 feet. The proposed bays are specifically intended to support tradespeople, such as electricians, plumbers, small contractors, by offering a flexible, cost-effective space that combines garage access, storage, and small office areas. These types of units have become increasingly valuable in supporting local trades and small businesses. In terms of stormwater management, the project has been designed to fully comply with current standards and include a multi-tiered treatment system comprised of gravel trenches with perforated pipe along the parking perimeter and driveway roadside, a sediment for bay to capture and settle out sediments and debris, and a proposed infiltration basin that will handle the final treatment and infiltration of runoff. Stormwater from the building roof will be directed via downspouts and roof drains to the infiltration basin. Surface runoff from paved areas will be conveyed through the gravel trench system to the for bay before reaching the basin. The design maintains or reduces peak flows at all discharge points, including the 50-year storm event, as required. Additionally, a new combined septic system is going to be a part of this proposal. It will serve both the proposed garage bays, the doggy daycare there, and the auto sales place. I don't have that designed quite yet. It's going to be located behind the automotive business, which is that structure shown kind of on the top of the plan. It's in a lighter kind of hue. It's going to be right in that area where the cursor is. We've done preliminary stone and pipe big field design with each building having their own tank going into that area, and it all fits. So, that's the plan right now, and during the next processes, we'll be able to get that plan approved by the town and the state and have that moving forward. As a part of our permitting process, the plans were submitted for third-party review by TEC. We've received those comments, as have you. Most of their feedback consists of minor technical clarifications and cleanup items, which are being addressed by Engineering Alliance, from what I've been told. There were no significant design or layout concerns, from what I could tell. In parallel with the local review process, we have secured an updated entrance plan from New Hampshire DOT, ensuring that the access from Route 125 meets all the state requirements. We are confident that the entrance improvements will help support both current and future traffic volumes at a safely and effective way. So, in summary, this project retains the existing businesses, makes sufficient use of the underutilized rear portion of the property, introduces a sought-after commercial use that serves local trades, and has been designed with full intention to access drainage zone and compliance. So, if there's any questions or comments, it would be great to take those down and make them a part of our corrections, too.
Thank you so much. So, I just wanted to see, have you received any comments or have you saw any comments from the fire department concerning...
Not at this time.
Okay.
I didn't know if that was part of the TEC. I haven't completely read all those comments.
Okay.
If it isn't in there, then yes, that will be.
Yeah, because we'll just want to make sure that their trucks can get through, of course.
Yep, yep. I know that one of the comments had something to do with the turning radius of vehicles on the TEC, so...
Right.
If that's all incorporated into one, that will be done as a part of the plan improvements.
Perfect, thank you.
And a condition of approval, a sign-off letter from the Brentwood Fire Department.
I was looking for the setbacks on the drawings. I see the numbers, but not the lines. Am I missing...
It's a good question, they might not be on there. There's a zoning envelope shown on some of the sheets, but I don't know if that's... I didn't prepare them, so I don't know his terminology, if he means building setbacks or what, but I can get some clarification on that.
I think if you... Actually, that might just denote that 55 feet.
Minimum rear setback 55.2 feet. That's from the... Glenn, did you look at the setbacks?
The setback line should be placed on... There are no well and setbacks on this site portion.
Yeah.
On the site layout plan, there's this dashed line with zoning.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm trying to... I didn't prepare these plans, so I'm just going off of what you guys are seeing, too. I can get better clarification. I don't know if his terminology by zoning envelope is building setback. I mean, I typically label him building setback typical, so... I can look into it between now and the next meeting and clarify everyone's comments. I'm kind of writing them down as I go.
So, on...
There is a block, there's a block at the bottom of the plan.
Yep, I see that. So, there's the 55.2 is the last number on the bottom there, and there's a 55.2 right above it showing the distance from the corner of the building to the property line. There's one below it, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I'm assuming...
So, yeah, I'm seeing that, that he's calling them out, but not necessarily illustrated on the plan, so I hear you.
It is a little unusual.
Other questions? Paul, do you want to turn your microphone off if you're not...
Sorry.
There you go. Everybody's a little quiet, yeah.
On the site layout sheet here, is that correct? You show 26 feet to the...
That's the width of the pavement.
Pavement, right.
Yep.
So, it's 55 feet to the property.
Right.
It'd probably be good just to run this by the fire department. It used to be years past that you went over 10,000 square feet in the building. You know, you had to provide some period suppression. Because a lot of it has to do with the fire, a lot of the particular uses that was in there. But in 11,000 square feet, it's pretty too far.
Right. I know I've done some of these buildings in the past in other towns, and it was, they made either do a cistern or a combination of something in buildings like this. But, as stated before, we'll speak to the Brentwood Fire Chief on what sort of requirements he will have on this application.
Do you have any questions on Glenn's comments while you have him?
Not at this time.
Okay.
And Mr. Greenwood, you are satisfied that your comments have been satisfied?
Oh, no, they haven't been satisfied yet.
Okay, would you, could you go through Glenn's comments one by one, so we can talk about those and see how they are going to be satisfied or have been satisfied?
Yeah, I don't have Glenn's comments right in front of me.
I will provide you with a couple.
That's even better. Building elevation needs to be provided for the proposed contractor bays. That's pretty... Impact fee needs to be proposed. Oh, these are... Impact fee, all plan sets.
Right, the endorsement, the endorsement block for the impact fee has to be added.
I will make sure to go through...
Yeah, because they're...
With the engineer with these, because like I said, I did the existing conditions plan and kind of let him take the lead on some of these comments. So, I'll have to do a phone call with him to make sure that he satisfies all these before September meeting. I'd feel more comfortable with that, to be able to get through Glenn's comments, Fire Department, and TEC's review. I think it'll be a lot more...
And we can do similarly to what you and I did for the Sandborne.
Right.
We can talk next week, if you want. Who are they allied?
Yeah, Engineering Alliance, yeah.
Alliance, yeah. We can do a, you know, a conference call.
Yep, I have no problem with that.
So, number 11 is, does the planning board want the building reviewed by the fire department? I think the answer is yes.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Understood.
I just wanted to get that out there.
Yeah.
It's always a condition of approval.
I'm wondering if we should table this to a future meeting, since they've...
Yeah, we're going to continue. So, there's, one of the comments is the location of the lighting, but just, and I know this is part of our zoning, and I always say this, but we have a dark skies ordinance, so make sure that they're, they comply with that. And then you have, it sounds like you haven't really had a chance to look at the TEC comments.
I haven't dove into it too, too much, because like I said, I was kind of taking the backseat to it with the existing conditions plan, and I think Engineering Alliance works in Massachusetts, and it's, it was easier for me to drive, drive over here, get their information, and present it as the surveyor for it.
Okay. Any other questions for the board before I open it up? Are there any abutters here? Yep, do you have any questions or comments?
I was just...
Could you come to the microphone? Could you come to the microphone if you... Thank you.
You can have this. Frank Hilton. I was just concerned with the review by the fire department for a cistern or some sort of fire suppression, because we have, we have one that we put on our property, and we wanted to make sure that that's reserved for our building.
Okay. Thank you. Did you, did you want to look at anything?
I have a copy.
Okay, all right, thanks, thank you. All right, in terms of a continuance, if there's nothing else?
I'll...
Timing, do you have, yeah?
No, continuance is great. Like I said, I wanted to come before the board to get comments like this, and whether it be neighbors, board, in addition to those TEC and Glenn's comments, to be able to put forth a nice product in September, ideally.
You want to come back in September?
Yeah. Unless there's not another meeting for August. I don't think that there'd be enough time, honestly.
Probably not, okay.
So, in light of that, I'll make a motion that we continue this hearing to September 4th.
Does that work for you, September 4th?
Yeah, yep. No, we'll try to shoot for September 4th.
And we can always continue if we have to.
Just let us know in advance if you're not ready, so that, because sometimes we come and things are canceled. Okay, do we have a second?
To September 4th at 7:00.
To September 4th at 7:00 PM.
And you made that motion.
Doug.
Doug did.
Second.
Too late. Doug and Doug. All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you, guys, I appreciate that.
Don't we have to do all in favor?
Yeah, we have.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Always have to.
Thank you.
Skip something, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have those extra plan sets that you promised me you'd bring tonight? The extra plan sets for Smith Road, did you bring those tonight? Make sure you bring them the next meeting. No, 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 I won't need them until the meeting, just make sure you bring them to the meeting, yeah.
Update on 1 Smith Road?
Oh, well, we have a plan set, and that is scheduled for the 21st of this month for a public hearing.
Okay.
Just keeping everybody on the same page.
I've reviewed the plan, I've added comments to Ryan. And you and I talked on the phone yesterday about some of the, he needed additional feedback on some of the comments.
Okay. And TEC is working on there?
I've submitted that to TEC. They're working on that, and I should have them, I'm guessing, from what I remember, next week.
Okay.
To add to the file.
Sounds good. Any questions on that one? Brentwood newsletter submission, so, thank you, Mark, for staying on top of this, so that we have a consistent communication. You received a link to work on this online, to make edits, so you have that option, or if anybody has any comments or questions tonight?
I've scheduled Glenn to work on that. If you have any edits or changes that you'd like to make, speak now.
And what's the deadline for submitting throughout September?
15.
15th, okay.
So, yeah, it's always the 15th.
Got it.
Next week.
Okay.
So, honestly, if we wanted to do it in some sort of coordinated way, so they didn't have tons of things flying in, get me your comments by next Wednesday, and we'll just send one package to them instead of...
Yeah, you can do it. Has everybody been able to get into Office 365 and edit a document online?
It is, it is pretty simple.
Yeah. Okay.
No, it's in here, I believe.
Yep, it's right after the TEC comments, you just had it.
It's this one, Brentwood Planning Board.
Yes.
So, this is going to...
The newsletter.
The newsletter. And Glenn's going to edit the sentence about the square feet on the ADUs, because it's confusing. But, yeah, you can, so before next Wednesday, when Glenn's in, if you have any edits...
When you say 365, I'm...
It's just that Microsoft Office, Word, and...
Being able to communicate back and forth, right?
No, like, he sends links, like the agenda.
Okay. I'll give that a shot.
You can edit the agenda.
Okay.
It's kind of like Google Docs, except Outlook, for a minute.
Because I just did something that enabled me to get into my email and stuff like that.
Oh, that's, that's the authentication.
Oh, the two-factor, yeah.
I got Brentwood's money's worth out of them yesterday. Kept the guy on the phone about an hour.
But if we don't know how to do that, we can just send you, if we have a problem, we can just send you.
But, no, Mark, when you send out the minutes, there's a review or respond section on there, right, that you just click on, and you can suggest edits to your... Yeah, you, when you edit that document, when I open the document, it has your edits in red, and I can, I review them. I can either accept them or reject them. So, feel free to review, I don't, I've never rejected, I don't think, any. It's just a way of knowing who's touching the document, who's editing the document.
Okay.
So, I can see the original form and the changed form. If I just let you edit, then I wouldn't know what was changed or who changed it. So, that's the way that process works, and it works for me, and hopefully it works for you.
Yeah, it's a lot easier than sending eight emails with comments.
So, you are doing that, or what?
Doing what?
This has already been established, Mark established it.
Right, okay.
And then I'm just going to work on one section of it, but if anybody else wants to add anything, just please do it by next Wednesday.
All right, Tonya Lane?
I spoke to Chris regarding his answers to the questions that were posed to him. He's going to have that next week. He had to send somebody out into the field for a reason, and those are coming. That I did inquire, I actually called him, so, they are coming. I wish they were here a little sooner, but... Well, in all fairness, we gave him 45 days. We asked for responsible in a 45-day period. Yeah. That's reasonable.
Yeah, he only got it like a second week ago.
And did you let the attorney know when that's coming? Because I think she just asked for an update, right?
Well...
Like a stat, just a status.
What, what would I be updating, right?
That we're, the comments are due next week. You know, we expect to have more information.
She was away on vacation, and I believe now she's back, so... I think, I think the best course of action is to get those comments for you to review them and to create your comments, and then contact Town Council as to your comments upon Chris's comments.
Yeah, I think she just, you can just let her know the timing, that it's going to be...
She might have been asking for a status, because the other attorney for the client is probably asking her where we are as a board.
So, it's going to be at least a couple more weeks. Okay, HB 577 ADU definitions. I know the New Hampshire Municipal Association put out some guidance.
We have to make changes, so...
Yeah.
I would propose that I, I work on making the edits that the state law requires, and put that to the board for our September meeting, September 4th meeting.
Well, that should be part of what Resilience is doing, too, though, no?
Because the state has told us what's required, I don't really want to make them do that.
Yeah.
I want to make them work on the multifamily.
Yeah.
Well, you know, the state law tells us what we have to allow and what we can't deny, so I'm happy to make those changes to our ordinance.
But even though it's state law, we, the town still, it still has to go to a town vote to change, to change our ordinance.
To change ours, it does.
Yeah.
But, anything that's in ours as of July 1st that doesn't comply with the state law is obviously then superseded.
Yeah, mhm.
Okay.
And whereas with the state law about housing in commercial zones, that our proposal for multifamily development will have an impact on, that doesn't go into effect until next year.
2027, yeah, okay.
I wanted to get some clarity and pose this question to the board, because I believe, the questions are coming in hard and fast.
About ADUs?
Yes, since this legislation changed. So, if you read through the state of New Hampshire's legislation, it calls an ADU built within an existing structure on your property, an attached ADU, okay?
Pre-existing structure.
Yes, pre-existing structure on your property. It defines it as an attached ADU, clearly. Is the legislation that we have on the books regarding an attached ADU is, should be used in determining the size of that ADU.
Well, the state law says what the minimum, that you can't control, a minimum below 725.
What we have on our books...
I know, but isn't that obsolete now that, when does the state law take effect?
It's in effect now.
Now.
It's in effect now.
July 1st.
So, that's, that's the governing standard right there, period.
But you're asking how, how do you calculate the square footage?
I didn't know what happens to our existing attached ADU ordinance.
If it's more restrictive than the state law, then it's superseded.
But it's not.
Okay.
It'll allow you to build a larger ADU, depending on the size of your home.
Gotcha. So, this is precisely why I want to look at the law, apply it to our ordinance, and give you guys something to look at, instead of you trying to sit here...
And figure it out.
Not having had a chance to really review what that law change was.
You could just say we don't know what we're talking about.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, I think it's incumbent upon me to give you information for you to review.
Yes.
Does that include maybe a little FAQ for...
Sure.
The questions that are coming in?
Yeah, Mark and I will talk with Mark about what he's hearing, the questions that he's being asked, so that the information I give you guys reflects that as well.
Moving along.
All right.
Because I'm doing this, you know, for all four of my communities, we're all impacted differently.
We're not alone.
And it does make, it just has made the conversation more convoluted, so you should have something in front of you for us to talk about.
Thinking, you know, of changes outside the building structure, self-likable parking. All your communities are probably trying to come up with some language for parking.
Well, no, because the state law, I said, an ADU, you can only do, you can only require one parking space.
Where we require four.
Yeah, so it doesn't matter what we...
Right, so we're going to re-apply all of this.
Yes.
But I think what we were asking the group to before last week was just a very straightforward, concise summary of where we stand in relation to the state law, just so people understand what we have a right, what we can control and what we need to change to comply with state law. We don't want to get too far in the weeds on this first article of the BNL, right? And we want to just keep it pretty simple.
We want to, I think, I think that the town should have two goals, complying with state law, and if there's anything else we want to accomplish that doesn't conflict with state law, we should do that. But you, but you have to have something in front of you for this discussion here, any malfeasance.
Okay, September 4th?
September 4th.
Do we need a vote on that?
No.
Hard to do it in your head.
I had questions about driveways, and I think it's, it may come up now that detached ADUs are allowed, that you still need 200 feet of frontage for a driveway. So, you would need 400 feet of frontage, or 500 feet of frontage for two driveways. So, if somebody comes in, and they want to build a detached ADU and ask if they can put a driveway into it, the answer's no, correct?
Well, the answer is a qualified no, they don't have the appropriate frontage.
Right, yeah.
They better, they're going to have to use a shared driveway.
Yeah.
Right in the driveway permit, it states the very specific RSA that governs that driveway permit. And in that legislation, it specifically states you cannot have more than one driveway unless you have 500 feet of frontage.
And we've talked about this a little bit, like, where does the process break down? That's another topic, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Cobblestone entrance to River Run. Did everybody see the email on this?
You didn't.
Seems like a good proposal. We were just speaking this afternoon about having some clause in there that the improvements beyond the asphalt would be the responsibility of the homeowners association.
Yes.
So, I can just see a wing plow, where that's on a, on an angle there, ripping that up. But that's the only practical option. They're set in mortar, I know, but...
Doug Finn, do you need a backstory?
A little bit, please.
So, I was contacted about the entrance of River... So I was contacted about the entrance of River Run.
Okay.
And because of the, the width of mill, tractor trailers were having difficulty pulling into River Run. And what was happening is the trailer tires were dragging off the asphalt into the grass and it created a very muddy situation. So, and, and if you keep doing that time and time again, what happens is the degradation of this asphalt here just gets eaten up. So what they did as a temporary solution was dump a riprap in there, or large stone, to keep that from happening. But they wanted to come up with a more long-term solution and one that's more aesthetically pleasing. So I was approached about a cobblestone. And at that point, I got Chris involved, Chris Raymond. I wanted his engineering expertise and the design of this apparatus. So Chris has gotten involved, um, they have laid out some preliminary plans, Chris has made a few suggestions, as in, I want an engineered plan uh, of this construction. And number two, it, he is suggesting that it be part of the HOA documents, that we don't have to maintain this. Now, the way this, I proposed it, and it sounds like that's the way it's going to be done, is if you look in the center of roundabouts, there's a cobblestone inside the roundabout. And what that is for is for tractor trailers who can't make the roadway, there's a space for them, their rear trailer tires to run over that. Now, they make it out of cobblestone simply because they don't want your everyday traffic up there running over it. So if you run over it with your car, it's a bit uncomfortable, you're not really, want, want to do that, but it's certainly adequate for a tractor trailer inside trailer tires to run over it. But they're inset in concrete. They're not just sitting there loose. There's an engineering standard to that and we'll get some engineered plans to that. Um, and also, we're going to request that it become part of the HOA.
So there's an advantage for doing it this way versus paving?
Oh, yeah. And then, and I think that we, I, I, there is legislation that says the mouth of a roadway. This is just a way, if cobblestone makes it inconvenient or, or traffic not to drive over it, but it serves its intended purpose for keeping the beautification of the entrance of a roadway from tractor trailer traffic from ruining it.
It's.
As part of the plans they're providing, are they gonna provide a construction detail, the details?
Yes, um, I believe.
And we talked about 18 inches of subgrade, so they're gonna really take out any lone or belterious material and replace it with a good subgrade.
Yeah, this email chain's pretty deep. And I did, I did forward this email to board members.
And that'll stand up during construction to the trucks going in and out?
It's designed to.
That, like that level of.
Yes, it's designed to, just like a roundabout. Just look at the one, let's say for instance, um, Walmart, right? Uh, there's a bunch of roundabouts that have that cobblestone to it. And they, and that, that's what it's. Yeah, and that's what they're designed to do, is take that inside weight of a tractor trailer tire.
What did you say, Steph?
It is. He proposed that on the letter.
You do.
Has anybody talked to the people who live on either side of that, just to let them know what's being proposed? I know, I mean, it's in the right of way or it's.
Part of it is within the right of way and part of it is not. Well, actually, you'd have to get a tape measure out. Um, I'd say the majority of it is in the right of way. But I imagine if you asked any resident, would you like to have muddy riprap or a nice cobblestone strip, I think the obvious choice would be.
Can they do something on the corner of Pine and 27?
That's not the town of Brown.
I mean, the, the town can.
Keep dumping rocks in it. Um, okay, yeah, my only concern is that we make sure that it does get into the HOA documents because we don't want to be maintaining cobblestone 10 years from now.
Right.
Nope.
Questions? Concerns?
Good point.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, tha- thank you, Mark, and for being so communicative as well, as always.
And Glenn, uh, process wise, uh, you know, we, we often feel changes following after subdivision approved. So this would fall within that, those parameters.
Yeah. As long as our town engineer.
Oh, yeah, but without having another hearing.
Right, yeah, yes, absolutely.
Alright, we have meeting minutes from July 17th?
I'll move, I'll move approval of the July 17th minutes.
Second.
Any changes or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any other business?
Just abstaining from it.
Okay, sorry.
Thoroughly read.
Um, I just had one thing for other business.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to make board members aware and I'm, I, um, I can forward, uh, my note along if it would be helpful to folks. Um, I did submit a letter, um, to the Fremont Select Board considering the grass drags, um, issue. I, and, and thank you so much, Mark, for reminding us about.
Yes.
About that hearing.
I have an update as well. Please go ahead.
I, I made it clear in my letter that I'm not speaking on behalf of the planning board, I'm just expressing my own personal view. My letter was specifically about the alcohol policy and I was just urging them to strongly consider the idea of pursuing a beer garden rather than allowing people to take in whatever alcohol they want. My pitch to them was just that a beer garden would allow people to purchase beer and wine in a controlled setting rather than having people potentially bring in handles of liquor and who knows, and who knows what. Uh, I also thanked them for, um, being so communicative with us and being good, you know, being good neighbors, uh, in that sense. Um, so I just wanted to let, let you all know that I, I did send a note along to them.
Yep.
I did today print out seven copies of Glenn's comment letter to the planning board and brought them in person to the Fremont Town Hall and, uh, gave them to the town administrator, Heidi. Um, very lady, very nice person, um, to talk to and she really appreciated our input on the matter. Um, but I wanted to make sure, and I apologize that we wouldn't be there this evening uh, as a conflict of scheduling. Um, and I did send it to her electronically as well, so that she could disseminate that to board members before the meeting. So I just wanted to make sure your voice and, and in a document that you all agreed upon, uh, was heard there this evening.
Thank you.
The only thing.
The only thing that was interesting about that is I feel like we had a discussion and we had concerns. And in the meantime, the chief sent a supportive letter that was like, don't worry about it. So we were, yeah, so I feel like, yeah, I don't know how we could have addressed that, but, um.
Well, I think he has a right to do it, but.
Yeah.
For us.
Yeah, we don't have any control over that. It was just kind of mixed messages.
Doug and Doug and I were, and Mark.
And Mark.
Were at that meeting in Fremont, in the Fremont.
I called.
Yeah.
The Fremont chief was 100% in accordance with Glenn's.
With Glenn's.
In the fact that you have a beer garden and this idea of unlimited. And we're that, you know, I, I wrote to Chief of Police, President of Town and said, you know, I think you ought to take a stand on this and write a letter. And then basically just gives him a hug and I just didn't understand.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it was surprise, it was a little surprise.
But it was also mentioned that the planning board did not have that jurisdiction. It would have to go back to the select board to make the decision on the beer garden or any type of change.
We have nothing to say, other than just our input, you know?
I would like to express.
The Fremont Select Board.
That's right.
I would like to express my thanks and gratitude to the Fremont Select Board and Select Board for welcoming your comments in the fashion that they did.
They were exceptionally responsive.
100%, yeah. And I think that's important as community members. And I think it's also important that when invited to these things that you attend and you give your comments. And I think you've done your duty and, and I thank you for that as well.
Alright.
Motion to adjourn.
This, I was gonna say, this is a new record for shortest meeting, unless anybody has anything.
Just one comment, as a reminder, I will not be here for the next meeting or the following meeting.
We should talk about this a little bit. So, um, you're not here next meeting?
I will not be here for the next meeting. Um, Kristen knows how to turn the recording device on. I just need someone to take minutes, which is real simple, time it starts, attendance, time it starts, all the motions, who made the motion, the vote count. I don't need any much more than that. And the time that it ends.
Do we ever get that tape recorder that I was willing to pay for?
No.
Couldn't you order one next week?
I have one, it's, look, it's on.
Oh, so we.
You turn around, you see, you look at it.
We can make use of that. That would be a good way.
Well, the problem is, is that I see, and I've mentioned this many times and people have gotten angry at me, but this is you, Bruce, when you start talking to people. You start doing this.
Alright, let's go on to a different subject.
Nobody can understand what you're saying.
Maybe they have a small recorder. Kathy and other assistants in the past have maintained a small recorder on the table.
I can do it off of that, the video thing, but it's real quick if you just, just jot it down and it just can be shorthand. That's all, just in case that goes snafu, I have something to back up on.
Yeah.
I am perfectly happy to do that.
You do that for me, Mr. Greenland?
We can, we can pause and make sure that we got the votes.
I truly appreciate that.
Bruce, tape recorders?
Thank you, sir.
Is anyone else, uh, gone for August 21st? August 20, August, the next meeting, are you here, available?
Who's attending?
Who's attending?
I will be there.
Okay.
Sounds like everyone but you and Mark.
Okay.
Okay.
And it, and we couldn't remember, well.
And then September 4th.
I think Mr. Ram still said that he would be, just one meeting.
Okay.
I also think he was traveling to Timbuktu.
Any, anybody else have, um, dates they want to mention? Okay. Alright, we had a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
I, I seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, turn your microphone.
Goodnight, everybody.